Do you have your quorum and agenda with traffic posted?
Yes.
And the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public appearances? Any public appearances today? All right, we'll go on to discuss. Consider the minutes of the board meeting from May 4th.
Motion to approve the minutes as prescribed.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yep, first we'll have a presentation with, um, from Greg Johnson with Ellers. We'll take a second to get set up so, and these board members may want to, so you can see.
You all have hard copies of the presentation. Got you. What do you think?
If you have any online call, you'll help them out a little bit.
Good evening, my name is Greg Johnson. I'm with Ellers. We're the village's municipal advisor. Worked with the village on debt and capital financing and also on economic development consulting matters. We first started working with the village in 2013. I was asked this evening to come and just kind of give you a brief overview of the village's current debt profile and also give an update on each of the village's existing tax incremental finance districts. That's going to be the subject matter I'll cover this evening. Just to give a quick review of the types of debt that are permitted under state statutes in Wisconsin. There are generally two types of debt that are issued by municipalities. The first is general obligation debt or referred to as GO debt. That's the most common form of debt that municipalities issue. Legally, you are pledging an irrepealable tax levy to pay back the debt service that's issued on a general obligation basis. So from an investor's standpoint, that's buying the general obligation debt. It's the most secure form of debt because it has that irrepealable tax levy pledge behind it. Most communities may issue general obligation debt for a variety of purposes and only pay for a portion of that debt service through their tax levy, as is the case with Cottage Grove. We will abate or reduce that levy with utility revenues or tax incremental finance district revenues. But legally, you're agreeing to levy a tax to pay back that debt service once it's issued. The Wisconsin constitution also limits the amount of general obligation debt that any community can have outstanding and that principal amount is equal to 5% of the total equalized value of the community. So there is a legal limit on the amount of debt that you can have outstanding in addition to just the financial considerations of being able to pay back the debt service. The second major form of revenue or debt is called revenue debt and that is where you are pledging a non-levy revenue source to pay back the debt service. Most common types of revenue debt are utility revenue debt, debt where you're pledging either water revenue, sewer revenue, or stormwater revenue to pay back that debt service. There's no legal limit on the amount of revenue debt you can have outstanding. It's, there's no cap like there is on general obligation debt. But you must be able to demonstrate both at the time you're issuing revenue bonds that the revenue that you are pledging is sufficient enough to cover the debt service. The typical coverage requirement is for every dollar in revenue debt payments that you make on annual basis, principal and interest, your net revenues available, for example, for utility, after you've paid all your operating expenses, those net revenues need to be 1.25 times higher than your debt payments and you need to maintain that debt service coverage ratio over the life of the bond. So there's a little more stringent financial requirements and legal requirements to issue revenue debt but it's common for communities to have both types of debt outstanding and that's the case here in Cottage Grove. Included in your handout is a summary of all the existing debt obligations outstanding for the village presently. Just a summary of when the debt was issued, the original dollar amount, the description, and then the general purpose for which that debt was issued and then the call dates that are assigned presently to that debt issuance. So this summarizes all the existing general obligation debt as well as the revenue debt that's outstanding. All the revenue debt that the village has issued in the past and has outstanding presently was issued through the environmental improvement funds program, which is a program that's jointly administered by the Wisconsin Department of Administration and the Department of Natural Resources and provides subsidized interest rates for water and sewer projects. So all that revenue debt was issued through that program and that interest rate is actually subsidized and is lower than typically market conditions. So that's the only form of revenue debt that the village has outstanding. The remainder of the general obligation debt is either in the form of notes and notes where by statute have a term up to 10 years or bonds which have a term up to 20 years on a general obligation basis. A couple of the village's outstanding debt obligations were issued on a taxable basis versus a tax exempt basis and when a debt issue is considered taxable, that's usually because the debt is being issued to benefit a private party or a private business. It wasn't debt that was being issued for a public improvement project or something that benefits the village overall. It's usually some kind of private business use that causes that to be taxable and that's common with tax incremental finance districts. There are schedules in your handout that go through each existing debt obligation that's outstanding. Shows the annual principal and interest payments due as well as the current interest rates. So that is summarized over two pages is all of the existing general obligation debt that is outstanding. So you can look at that at your leisure. On page six is a summary of the general obligation debt limit. As I mentioned, that limit for the constitution is 5% of equalized value. So at the, your present equalized value for all property within the village, including your tax incremental finance districts, is 603,733,000. So 5% of that number is a little over 30 million. So that's the general obligation debt limit outstanding of the village. As of the end of 2013, uh, 15, excuse me, you'll have approximately 18.6 million of general obligation debt outstanding. That's about 61, 62% of your limit. The remaining legal capacity you have available is about 11.5 million. So that certainly doesn't mean you should borrow 11.5 million dollars. It just says legally, that's the amount of additional general obligation authority that you have available to you. So we show here on this chart, if you experience a modest growth in your equalized value and as you pay off principal annually on your existing debt, that capacity starts to grow. So certainly if you see greater growth in your total equalized value of the community, that's going to give you more of that residual borrowing capacity if you need it for projects in the future. We've also summarized all of the revenue debt that's outstanding for the sewer revenue debt, debt that is pledged to be repaid exclusively from sewer revenues of the village. There are two clean water fund loans. Those are the environmental improvement fund loans that I mentioned a moment ago. Those are for sewer projects. So there's one clean water fund loan that was issued in 1998 that matures in 2018 and a second loan that was issued in 2009 that matures in the year 2028. And then your existing water revenues debt outstanding consists of a safe drinking water fund loan that was issued in 2013. You're almost nearing the point where you're making your final draw on this loan. These types of loans, the EIF, are a little different than open market securities. When they're secured, you can actually draw the funds on a construction project as needed. So each time you draw money, a new debt service schedule is generated. There's still, I believe, another draw remaining on this loan. So that'll change this particular debt service schedule. The interest rate remains the same, the term of the loan remains the same. It's just the principal amount and interest payments get updated each time you draw on the bonds. There are two safe drinking water fund loans that the village is in process of securing for a couple of projects. One is for reservoir number two for approximately $740,000, which will, is scheduled to close later this year. And then the gas and road transmission line, which is approximately $1.4 million, which is targeted for next year as well. Both of these would be safe drinking water fund loans where you get that subsidized interest rate through the state. So those are two loans in progress that would add to the revenue debt outstanding for the water utility. Before I continue and kind of transition into the TIP districts, are there just any general questions on the debt side before I continue? I hope you have the answer questions at the end as well. Okay. The second part of my presentation is to talk about tax incremental finance districts and we'll go through each of the TIP districts that are presently in use and in implementation by the village. But first, I just kind of wanted to generally explain how tax incremental financing works. It's really the main economic development tool that Wisconsin communities have to help promote economic development or redevelopment. It's really the main tool that's available to communities in the statutes and so it's generally pretty widely used throughout the state as a result of it really being the main tool that local communities can use to help promote development. How a TIP district works is as you identify an area or a territory to be included within a TIP district. And there's no limit on the number of parcels necessarily that are in a district, but there is a limit on the amount of value that a community can have outstanding in all of its TIP districts and that is 12% of the village's total equalized value. So if you take the increment value of all of the village's current TIP districts and you wanted to create a new district, you could only do that if you were under that 12% threshold. But in this example, we have up in the upper left-hand corner, we have about eight parcels that are identified to be included within a tax incremental finance district. The boundaries must be contiguous. So you must have whole parcels included within your TIP and you must have a boundary that is contiguous. You can't jump from one side to another of the village. You have to have a contiguous boundary. So how a TIP district works is at the time the TIP district is created, all of the properties within that district have a current taxable value. So in this example, those eight properties, at the time the TIP district was created, the taxable value of all those eight properties is added together and that is called the base value. That's the value of all the properties at the time the district is created. Over the life of the TIP district, the village and all the other taxing jurisdictions, the county, the school district, and the technical college, all continue to collect their share of tax revenue on that base value of the properties within the TIP district, just like they do before the TIP was created. So if those eight properties have a total value of $2 million combined, all the taxing jurisdictions continue to collect their share of tax revenue on that $2 million worth of value. Where the financial benefit of a TIP district comes into place for the village is as new property, as development occurs within those boundaries or the property value appreciates over time, a combination of both, appreciation of value and new construction, new taxable value, that new value that's generated is called the increment value. So using my example of if you had a base value of $2 million and say the second year into the TIP district, you have some new construction on that eight parcels and say you have a new facility that's constructed that has a $3 million worth of taxable value. The village will retain all the tax revenue collected on that $3 million of new value. But you're not just keeping the village's share. You're keeping the school district's share, the technical college's share, and the county's share. You're keeping all of that new revenue generated to help pay for any expenditures that are associated with those eight parcels in this example. So that's really the financial power of sale to the local community is that you're entering into a partnership with all the other taxing jurisdictions that they're essentially foregoing that tax revenue on new development to help pay for expenditures that were related to that, helping that development occur. And at the time a TIP district is created, the main finding that has to be met through the statutes is what's called the BUTF four test. And that says, BUTF four, the use of TIP, that development might not occur at all. It might not occur in the same timeframe as it would if the TIP was in place or there may be some job creation or some other criteria that gets uniquely applied to each TIP district in each community to determine how that BUTF four test is satisfied. So the other taxing jurisdictions are essentially saying, by creating this TIP district, we think it's going to generate more value over the life of that district than if we left the development exclusively to market forces and at the time the TIP district closes, we're going to have more taxable value than we would have if the TIP district was not in place. So the TIP district can remain open depending on the type of district that's created. TIP districts can be open as much as 27 years depending on the type of district that's created. Other TIPs have a maximum life of 20 years. So if the district closes, either once you've reached the end of the maximum life or if the project generates more revenue than anticipated and you've generated enough money from that district to pay all your outstanding debt and any other expenditures, you close the TIP district early and then all that property goes back onto the tax rolls and all the other taxing jurisdictions collect their share of taxes on all that new value. So that's really kind of how the fundamentals of TIP work. Whether you're in a TIP district or outside the TIP district, you pay the same tax rate. It's probably the most common misperception you hear about TIP is that if someone's in a TIP district, they're paying a different tax rate than everybody else. You're paying the same tax rate. The only difference is where your tax money is going. If you're in a TIP district, all that new tax rev, tax, taxes that a business pays on new value that was generated above their base, it all goes to the village as opposed to being distributed to all the other taxing jurisdictions. So that just kind of explains fundamentally the concept of how TIP districts work over the life of the district.
Great. If it closes early, if it fills up, that's great, it's a benefit. What if it doesn't? What's the flip side there?
If it doesn't, I mean, if you're at the end of the day where you have costs that exceed the amount of increment you've collected or built up over time and those are costs that fall back to the community to pay for those costs with other costs. So that is definitely kind of a risk in the proposition of, you know, hoping that the TIP district over its life pays off over time. And certainly, you know, it's, TIP districts usually kind of have a lag before they get started because when you create a TIP district, when construction occurs within a TIP district, say you've created a new TIP district this year and it had a base value as of January 1st of 2015 and there was some construction that occurred within that district this year, the village isn't going to see revenue from that new construction until 2017. So there's always that initial startup, kind of that lag before revenue generates. And sometimes, depending on the nature of the project, you're incurring some of those costs before development occurs. So you're experiencing some costs and having to front those costs but then over time, you get that money generated and paid off. So it's kind of understanding those propositions over the life of the district in terms of whether they're going to pay off upfront or that it's going to take a while for you to get those costs recovered.
And then if it doesn't, if you, if the district isn't paid off, is that then able to be levied or?
Yes, you can levy it. If it's debts, general obligation debts exempt from levy limits or you can use other funds that the village has available to recover those costs. But you can take those costs and then spread them out to the other taxing jurisdictions. It's the village's responsibility to make the district hold at the end of its coming short. I'll now walk through each of the TIP districts of the village. The first is TIP district number five, which is primarily consists of the area out by Commerce Park. This was an industrial TIP district that was created on May 19th of 2013. There was a project plan amendment to the district in 2012 that added some additional projects and added some additional costs that can be taken on within the district. You are allowed to amend a TIP district once it's initially created, either to expand or subtract boundaries or to add some additional project costs to react to certain economic conditions or things that change over the life of the district. One unique characteristic for TIP district number five is that there's a development agreement in place with landmark that requires them to generate a certain amount of tax increment revenue annually and there's a formula that's applied within the district and if they don't generate the guaranteed amount or a schedule within the agreement, they make a, you know, a payment to kind of make the village, you know, a payment to essentially make, give the village revenue to kind of make up that shortfall. So that was kind of a protection put in place for the village to make sure that they receive a certain amount of revenue within this district. For purposes of the cash flow and increment projections, which I'll go through in a moment for TIP district number five, we've built into this model some additional taxable value that's either anticipated based on known projects or some other potential development that could be realized within TIP district number five. So we have, the first project is the clinic project, which is under construction this year. In the model we've built in, that that clinic will have a taxable value of at least 3.4 million. There's the steel project, which is under construction this year, which we're showing as a taxable value of 5 million. And then we show some other potential development within the TIP, constructed in 2016 of about $3 million. So in the models that I'm going to go through this evening, there's no other development that's projected to occur within the TIP after year 2016. Obviously, you know, that's not the, the hope of the village that there would be some additional value but we're trying just to kind of look at the very near term based on projects that we know are in existence or some projects that could be coming to fruition in the very near future. Included in your handout is this worksheet, which just projects the tax increment over the remaining life of the district. And how this spreadsheet works is it just shows the construction year in the far left-hand column, the new taxable value added in the center column, which in the year it gets placed on the tax rolls, and then the revenue year is the year that the, that revenue is actually generated and received by the village. So for the current revenue year that you're in in 2015, you're collecting increment based on, you know, all value that was constructed up through year 2013. So that's all the value that's been generated. So that, you know, your most recent increment value is a little over 32.3 million of taxable increment value that's been generated in the district since it was created. And then we've showed the projects as summarized in a slide previously for steel, the clinic, and some other potential development being constructed in 2015 and 2016 and then no additional taxable value going forward. So based on those development projections that over, from 2015 to the final revenue collection year of the district are projected to be about 12.7 million tax increment collected. So this is a summary of a cash flow projection based on those development summaries and then factoring in all of the existing debt that is presently attributable to TIP district number five. So on the far left-hand side in green are all of the revenue sources that are attributable to TIP five. The main revenue source is the tax increment. The intergovernmental revenue is some computer rate that the village receives from the state that is attributable to this district. The village had a land sale that they had occurred actually late last year but the closing of the money was received by the village this year. So that's a revenue. And then the landmark payments are the other major revenue stream and that's a projection going forward over the remaining life of that development agreement. So those revenue sources are the primary revenues that add up for tax incremental district number five. We've summarized, just in one column, just so we could fit everything here on one page, all of the annual debt service payments outstanding attributable to tax incremental district number five. So for example, your total debt service payments for TIP five in 2015 were approximately $920,000. There's some other staff time, other costs charged to TIP number five. It's shown as a capital and an administrative expense. A development incentive that was entered into for the steel project that's shown projected going forward. And so you have all your expenditures totaled up in yellow. And then the annual column just shows the difference between your total revenues and your total expenditures on each given year. And then the cumulative column just shows your rolling fund balance going forward over the life of the district. So based on the existing debt profile, the development projects we identified, steel, the clinic, and some potential taxable value being constructed in 2016, we're showing that the TIP district, you know, would have a positive balance in its final year of revenue watching in 2027. So certainly, the known development projects that you're experiencing hopefully some other development going forward are really improving the overall picture for TIP district number five. This has improved quite a bit over the couple of two years that we've been working with the village, which is attributable to these development projects that are going on in TIP five. For TIP district number six, this was a mixed-use district. By mixed-use, by statutes, districts must have a combination of industrial, commercial, or some residential development. Within a TIP district, this was created in 2004. It was amended in 2010 to allow development incentives to be awarded. If that's at the village's discretion for TIP six. Presently, the increment that's being generated now, the most recent revenue here this year, 2015, isn't generating enough revenue to cover the debt service that was issued back in 2009 for TIP district number six. So going forward, it really needs to be development within this district to have enough revenue to cover existing debt obligations attributable to TIP six. So this is that same tax increment projection worksheet that we looked at for TIP five, except this is for TIP six. And here, we've shown the impact of some potential development in the future within TIP six, which totals about 10, totals $10 million and will be constructed, split in years 2016 and 2017. So it shows if there's some development that is secured within TIP six with a total value of about $10 million. The remaining increment collection period for TIP number six is another 10 years. Only goes out to year 2025. So with that $10 million in new value, TIP number six presently is, you know, has a deficit and so over time, that new development is going to be generated to help build TIP six out of that and eventually generate revenue that's sufficient to cover the existing debt obligations that are outstanding. In this analysis, we show the existing debt payments in 2009 for debt that was issued at that time for TIP six projects. That debt was issued with kind of a balloon payment in year 2019. In this analysis, we show that that would be restructured if revenues weren't sufficient to pay off that debt prior to maturing in 2019. So I've built just a, an example of what that takeout financing might look like. So again, the main revenues here are similar to TIP five. There's increment, but there's a need for some levy funds in the near term that kind of help offset and raise additional funds to cover the debt service payments. And then there's some modest special assessment revenue as well. So the main takeaway message for TIP six is that there needs to be some development to cover those project costs that were financed back in 2009. Otherwise, that debt's going to fall back to the village to pay for that, you know, through other means. A true projective would be through the levy. Finally, tax incremental district number seven. This was also a mixed-use district created in 2004. It was amended in 2010 to add development incentives and to allow the village to occur projects within a half-mile radius of the TIP boundaries, which is within your discretion under the TIP statutes, if that's within your project plan. There's a municipal revenue. There's a municipal revenue obligation, which is outstanding to Houston's Old Town Development. It's essentially what's called a pay-as-you-go development incentive. The amount of increment that is generated annually from that project is calculated each year, and then there's a portion of that that gets paid back, you know, to the developer as a development incentive, which is all defined in the development agreement as a principal amount and an interest payment that's due on that municipal revenue obligation. This is the increment projection worksheet as well. Here, we're showing about $3 million worth of taxable value constructed this year within TID District number seven. Similar to TID six, it has about 10 years left to collect increment over the life of this district. So the cash flow projection for TID seven, we have the TID increment on the far right-hand side, which includes that 3 billion of additional value to be constructed. Again, there's some special assessments to this district, just like there are for TID six. And then there are two debt obligations outstanding that are partially attributable to TID seven, some debt that was issued in 2009 and debt that was issued in 2012. And then that projected municipal revenue obligation payment through the development agreement that's affected change, will change annually depending on the amount of increment that's generated. We just held that concept going forward, as well as some, you know, capital, staff, and other planning charges charged to TID number seven as well. So TID number seven, as of the end of 2014, had a positive fund balance, you know, based on some additional development within the district, where this district is, you know, still projected to cash flow going forward. So this district is probably the, the healthiest of the three, just in terms of the increment being able to support the debt that's attributable to the TID districts. That's just kind of a overview of kind of where things stand presently, based on your current debt profile and based on, you know, the status of your current TID districts. We hope you have to reflect your most recent financial statements and discussions with staff about projects either, you know, underway, being constructed, or potential projects. So we try to factor into these cash flows, but really not get too, you know, looking too far ahead in terms of future developments. There's still time left in all your TID districts to still realize additional development. We really try to look at our planning horizon here, just over a two-year window, just so we can kind of conservatively evaluate where your TIDs stand today, what we know today in terms of development prospects. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on the TIDs themselves.
Just on six, Greg, the 10 million now projected in 16 and 17 has just a, an idea that something may happen at some point?
I think from our...
The, the estimates that we put in there are...
There's legitimacy to them.
Okay.
There's legitimate interest in the land, so, yeah.
Who does the public talk to get a map of where each district is located?
Dr. Aaron.
And projected equalized value on the general obligation, that's, that's a conservative estimate I would assume based on past, uh, past growth.
Right, it's actually, I think, even more conservative than that. So I mean, I think when you look over the past, you know, several years, a lot of communities lost equalized value on an annual basis, I think, really this past year, but values were released as of, you know, January, like, 2014 is when, speaking broadly, we started to kind of see statewide, those values start to recover. So we've shown some very modest appreciation. Certainly, if you realize several of the projects I mentioned, the clinic and steel, those numbers are a little far greater than what I had included in that projection. So I was, I wasn't even factoring in some of those projects, I was trying to be very conservative.
And those were the minimal values that they're guaranteed per the developer agreement to provide, so there's a good chance that it's even, there are even higher values than that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify for people to be able to understand that you guys typically project on a very conservative level, which allows for, you know, any, at any error that might occur, and that's, that's always called a new thing, so thank you for that.
Well, thanks for your time. If there are other questions that come up, I'm sure that you can direct it to staff when they can get in touch with me, or if you can reach, reach me directly, my contact information's included. My colleague Jim Mayhem works with me here in Cottage Grove, his contact information's included as well. Thanks for the time.
That's great.
If that is high-tech, it's great.
Okay, that's fine.
Hey, Greg, I actually thought of one more question. The, TID five is industrial, the other two are mixed-use. The, the districts are created with a specific purpose in mind, and those are within the statutes. What kind of limitations are put on each district based on those, on those named?
For the industrial TID district, the statutory requirement is that at least 50% of the area within the TID boundary must be suitable and zoned for industrial development. And that zoning requirement has to be maintained over the life of this district.
And how is, how is industrial defined in the statutes?
It's generally defined as, you know, things that are typically manufactured. I mean, and if you're, if you have village industrial zone classifications, generally that's going to be the industrial classification.
Okay.
Zoning. And then for a mixed-use TID, you have to be able to demonstrate that at least 50% of the area is either suitable for industrial, suitable and zoned for industrial development, suitable for commercial development and residential. The residential has a cap, it must be newly planted residential that meets some criteria identified in statutes that that can exceed 35% of the area of the mixed-use TID.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one that has kind of a more rigid cap.
Yeah, okay.
Now we have Ken Hurtiman with Ellers Investment, I'm sorry.
A little bit.
Presentation on the investment.
I'm not as, quite as high-tech as Greg, so I, I would just commit it at the paper, which I believe all of you have. My name is Ken Hurtiman, I'm the president of Ellers Investment Partners. Ellers Investment Partners is a subsidiary of Ellers Companies. We are registered investment advisors, where Greg and Ellers Co., Ellers Associates, that's subsidiary, they are municipal advisors. Okay, so just so we, we get that straight, and where Greg, say, advises on the, consults on long-term financial planning or debt issues, we advise on your investments, on the village's investments. So, um, well, spent just a little bit of time talking about what we are, how we do this, how we work with, how we work with the village, to get to the juicy details at the end to say, how are our investments doing? So that'll be the last page. But, um, we, we recognize that all communities are faced with certain challenges, basically, basically doing more with less. And we've seen over the last, gee, you know, they keep telling us interest rates are going to go up, but, you know, they've been in this low-rate environment since, you know, 2009. When is that going to happen? When are rates going to go up? Well, probably not anytime soon. So how can, uh, how can we help communities get to realize some interest income, some investment income in this environment? To give you a little bit of an example, where things stand and how far things have come, there's a pooled investment vehicle that all communities in Wisconsin can use, the local government investment pool. And we'll talk a little bit about that as, as we go on. Is an investment pool that all communities can use. If you had a million dollars in the Wisconsin LGIP in 2007 for the whole year, you would have earned a little bit more than $50,000 on that million. If you had a million dollars in the local government investment pool last year, 2014, you would have earned a little bit less than $1,000. Okay? So from 2007 to 2014, you know, it, it virtually dried up. So, um, are there ways to improve that? Yes, there are, that's, that's where, where we come in. So we were, Ellers kind of created us to look at how we can help communities be their investment department. So as I said, we're a wholly owned subsidiary of Ellers Companies. We are an independent registered advisor, we're regulated by the SEC. Because of that, we have a fiduciary duty to always act in the best interest of our clients, just like Greg and Ellers Companies, they have a fiduciary duty to always act in, in the village's best interest. We are investment specialists, only serving local governments. Municipalities are our only clients. Right now, we are engaged by about 100 communities here in Wisconsin, in Minnesota, in Illinois. We currently manage close to $400 billion in investments for all those communities. As, as opposed to some other providers, and maybe types of investments that the village might be used to or familiar with, we go the, the whole range. We're not, we're not a bank, so we're not here to sell you CDs, we're not a broker-dealer, we're not here to sell you securities. We're here to implement an investment plan. And that started out with when we, we first engaged with, beginning of 2014, right? Yeah, so a little bit of, we've been, we've been working with the village for a little bit more than a year. First thing we did is, I spent a couple days right in the office here gathering some data. We did a cash flow forecast to, to really put our hands on how you collect cash, when you spend it, those kind of things. And we developed an investment plan revolving around that. Yes, we did invest in CDs, we did invest in government securities, things like that, but it's part of a plan. So that, and, and that's how we, how we use that and moving forward with it on that plan basis. We do not have discretion, which means when you hire an investment advisor, you can, you can hire them in, in one of two capacities. You can give them discretion, which basically says, here's our investment policy, here's X amount of money, invest in it what you will, just as long as you don't violate the investment policy. Okay? Then they never have to talk to you again, and they can just do those investments, just as long as it's policy. Essentially, if you don't, we are a non-discretionary investment advisor, will kind of do the same thing, except before I can do any investment, I have to talk to Deb, or I have to talk to Matt and say that, here's my recommendation, here's my advice, is it okay if we do this? And I can't do that unless they say it's okay. Okay? They say it's not, but, well, we'll, we do something else, we make some other advice, or we don't do that. Okay? But that's, that's the difference between discretion and non-discretion. So that keeps you in control of your investments. You know, there's not pushing any envelope on that. We don't have an inventory to sell, so we're not a broker-dealer, where I'm not trying to, to sell something that we have an inventory that we bought at a certain price, that we're trying to sell you at a higher price. Okay? And because of that, we can offer impartial advice. The most important thing is to keep your funds safe. So to do that, first, we work with your investment policy, and, and we only, state statutes govern what you can and cannot invest in. And that is also spelled out in your investment policy. In our agreement with the village, we certify that we have your investment policy and that we will follow. We do not hold any of the cash or assets for the village. That is done with a third-party custodian. So all of your investments are held with that third party. Okay? So if, if a piano fell on me today, all you'd have to do is go to that custodian and say, hey, those are our, that's, those are our investments, that's ours, and that account is in the village's name. You just give us some authority to do some trading in that. You know, when Matt says, yes, go ahead and do that, we can do that through the account. Okay? But all your assets are, are held there. That custodian is TD Ameritrade Institutional. The main reason that we work with them is when we started working with them, we vetted, looked at a lot of custodians to do this, and the thing that convinced us to work with TD Ameritrade is they are part of the Toronto Dominion Bank Empire, if you will, based in Toronto, Canada. And when we were looking at that, at the time, and it's still currently, there, there are only about less than a dozen banks in the entire world that are AAA rated. And Toronto Dominion Bank is the only bank in North America that, that was AAA rated. So that was the, that was the deciding factor for us to, to work with them. And so with, and then working with advisors like us, they hold about $150 billion for safekeeping for all the, the clients and advisors that they work with. I talked a little bit about the cash flow analysis that we did, how we were here, we keep that up, and, and that's all part of your, the, the investment strategy and plan. We have access to virtually any type of investment from numbers of different sources that are permissible investments for the village. We, we can work with local banks, we can go into the brokered market and look at virtually any investment that is permissible for you by state statutes or by your investment policy. So, um, we do provide accounting reports for you every month. It's actually a couple of different ones. You get one from the custodian, from TD Ameritrade, here's everything. And then we provide a statement for you as well, that essentially has all the same information that the custodial statement has on it, plus a little bit more. There's performance reporting on there, there's cash flow projections for your investments, and a number of other things. That reporting is very flexible. If Deb called me tomorrow and said, hey, I'd like to see a report that shows me this, we could probably do it. So that's very flexible. So I will draw your attention to the last page in, in the handout. So we've been working with the village for a little bit more than a year, but this, what this shows is your, your investments by month for the year that just ended April 30th. So for that year, we've, we've managed investments with, for the village for a value of a little bit more than $3 million. Okay, that's, that's the top line. You've earned gross on that, a little bit more than $18,000. Okay? Now, Deb, I'm going to look at you and say, you probably didn't book $18,000 in interest, so this, this includes everything that's been paid, that is accrued up to this time, you know, that will be paid, you know, so this, this includes, uh, things that haven't paid but, uh, but accrued and maybe not paid. So, okay, so that's, that's where that $18,000 is coming from. You paid us over those 12 months a little bit more than $3,000 to manage them. All right? So your net earnings of $15,177 after you paid us. Okay? If you would have taken that $3 million over that year and just put it into the local government investment pool, you would, you would have earned less than $2,000. So even after you paid, uh, even after you paid our fee and your net earnings was $15,000, you earned $13,000 more than if you would have just taken that and put it into the local government investment pool. Okay? Now, I'll, caveat I'll put to that is, whenever you do any kind of investment performance like this, you have to do it to a benchmark, you have to compare it to something. So that something that you could have done is the LGIP. Is that the only thing you could have done? No, certainly not. Okay? But just for comparison, and for sake of simplicity... But just for comparison and for sake of simplicity, compare it against something that you were familiar with. That's, that's what we use for the benchmark. Okay? You know, I say something that you were familiar with. Now, the, the main thing with that is how did we do that? You know, the local government investment pool, they basically have to work under the same state statutes as you do, as far as your investments goes. But because of the planning that we've done for it, the average weighted maturity of your portfolio, if you took all the investments in your portfolio and determined the average weighted maturity of that, it's a little bit more, a little bit less, a little bit less than two years. Six hundred thirty-nine days was the average weighted maturity of your portfolio at the end of April. The L G I P's average weighted maturity was ninety-two days. So the stuff that they're investing is much shorter term than the things that you are invested in, but essentially it's the same things, just a little bit longer maturity. But we're able to do that because we've done that planning and we've done that cash flow analysis. You know, these are funds that you have that are available that you don't need tomorrow. So we can invest in it for a little bit longer term. So that's what I have. You have any questions? And your investments or the portfolio makeup or anything that we're doing?
If it's good enough for Greg, it's good enough for me. I'll say that.
Okay. Greg, is he good enough?
No.
But Matt, do we have any plans to increase the amount that we're investing through Ellers Investment? Or?
Well, Ken continues to, he could monitor our cash flow. If the cash flow would show that, then certainly. But this, right now, this is the amount that would be comfortable in the checking account month to month for us to pay our normal bills.
Okay.
So the, the whole plan, that's why we do that analysis, is first you invest for safety, then you invest for liquidity. So on that liquidity part is, is really when we did that cash flow forecast, we just, the simple way was to say, gee, how much do you need every day to make sure your bills get paid? Okay? And so once we determined that, that's kind of how we came up with this three million dollars. You know, you have more than, much more than three million dollars, but you need it in a place that, you know, is not conducive to this, to this kind of, type of investment. You need that to make sure you can pay your bills and debt.
You mentioned that Matt and Deb have the authority for the investments. So when it was created, why didn't we use the finance committee to, to do that also as a, as a group rather than the single point?
For timing purposes, so we don't have to schedule, schedule a meeting and, I guess, because it's my job.
A lot of, when a lot of these are called, some of these are called, they're, we need an answer within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So it's not very conducive to calling a meeting, getting a consensus of the finance and personnel committee to, to come to a conclusion, to do that, to get back to Ken in time to turn that around. The original investment policy was approved by the finance and personnel committee.
Okay.
And that's what gave us the authority to do.
Sure.
To make the decisions.
And I guess the monthly statements, the finance committee reviews those monthly statements. They get all that, or is that?
They don't, but they certainly can, but they haven't, they don't need them monthly. So they need them as needed basis.
That makes sense. It's even more. Okay. No, that's.
And as a follow-up to that point, I'm assuming that each municipality you deal with has one or two point people that.
Oh, yes, yes. So your, your investment policy has delegated the responsibility of the day-to-day function of the investment program to your board chair and your administrator. Okay? They, what the investment policy goes on to say, that they have to report to you on what they've done. So if, if I called them with a recommendation and they took my recommendation and they come to a meeting a month later and say, we did this investment. The board says, we don't like that. They'll direct me to liquidate that investment or to do something else. Okay? So you do have, and the board, you do have oversight on that. It's just basically not on a day-to-day basis. Another way that that fits in, we, we actually, up until about a year ago, we did have a community up north that the board did not delegate that responsibility to the treasurer. So I would call, I would call the treasurer and say, hey, you're, you have an investment that was called. What would you like to do with it? There's a board meeting in two weeks. I'll talk to them about it and I'll get back to you. Okay? And then by the time they, he'd come back and say, oh, we can reinvest that. And I make some recommendations. Okay, there's another board meeting in a month. So, and by the time that all gets done, all those investments are sold. You have to kind of start from scratch then. So that's why it's the best way to delegate that.
Generally, the board's authority to create the policy and then for staff to execute the policy.
No, that makes sense. Thanks.
Just for sake of discussion, can you give some other examples other than the L G I P that the money could be placed?
There, there are a couple. There is at least one privately-run local government investment pool that works out of the state of Wisconsin. Right now, the Wisconsin local government investment pool is yielding about point one-two percent at the moment. This other privately-managed one is yielding about point zero-four percent. So that's another pool. Another way to do this is essentially for Deb and Matt to do it. But an example is we did one of the government securities that you all was called recently. And to find the absolute best rate, oh, I probably talked to about four or five people just to place that one investment. So I think your total portfolio is maybe about a dozen and a half securities. Okay? So every time something like that, I'm sure, you know, Matt and Deb probably have a little bit other things to do with their time than to call four or five people to get a good rate. But, but there, you know, that, that's one example. I, you know, I mean, you could go to the bank and see what they pay on a money market account or CDs and things of that nature. There are, and, you know, money market accounts you can buy, but there are certain restrictions on those from state statutes that aren't really much more than the local government investment pool is, is paying at the time.
And you also have to keep in mind that, to make sure that it's all secure.
Yes.
Yep, just for Kylan, Alex and Pat's history with Ellers. I mean, they, they came on, was it about two years ago? And we've had excellent results from Ellers. And, and as I mentioned earlier, kind of jokingly, if it's okay with Greg, it's okay with me. But they've really helped us with a lot of financial gains over the past two years. And, and I'm, I'm more than comfortable with using them for the investment portion as well.
And as far as that, I mean, that goes, you know, Greg and I work pretty closely and, you know, when the village might be contemplating a debt issue. Greg's going to ask me about, you know, the investments, you know, and what, how will the investments work in, fit into that, to that whole process? So, you know, we, you know, we talk quite regularly about how all of these pieces fit together for the village.
I, I think that's a very big benefit as well, having you guys together.
Yeah, I would echo what Ed said. It's one of the best decisions we've made, getting you guys on board. Do you have any questions?
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. Next up is unfinished business. Village Police Department implementation update.
The fence in the back of the building is put in and the screening, the screening is put in. Per the covenants, we have to screen the fence, so material's back there. That's where brush and compost collection is planned to go. So there's screening available for that. There, the new sign is up and flag pole is up. And later this week, staff down there will be receiving training on utility, utilities, the HVAC equipment, new electronics in there. So staff training will happen this week. And since we're nearing completion here, we're looking for some direction maybe to have this item split up between Public Works and Public Properties Committee and L E C where needed. And then those committees can report from there because there will be other action items regarding the MOPFID study moving forward that should come from L E C, probably, probably not just the, this general implementation update. So I was just kind of wondering what everyone's thoughts were on, on that. Unless you want to continue to do it this way, that's fine too.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, the, I mean, we're essentially waiting for a couple of minor punchless items to be completed and, and a final bill sent.
Can I interject something? What about the call, the emergency phone on the outside of the, the building? Do we have that put up yet?
No, it's not put in yet, but that can go through, that can go through like L E C and then get a recommendation and come to the board.
Okay, so there's no plans to put one in right now?
It was, I discussed that with Bob, but it wasn't in the plans per se. We have money for it.
Okay.
What Jennifer was talking about is a emergency, for those that aren't familiar, an emergency phone that only can dial nine-one-one in case someone comes in an emergency, emergency situation to the P D and it's after hours. So it'll allow them to place that call. And then next board meeting, we'll put an agenda item on to schedule a date for open house for the building.
So money for the phone would be available from the leftover arrangement allotment?
I think we should wait to have the project closed out.
Sure.
We'll have an exact, an exact figure, but we'll have plenty of money to work with.
I, I haven't been by in the last couple. Is the Swanson sign down?
That I'm not sure.
It was up.
The Swanson sign?
It's down.
Is it down?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Anything to add, Dan?
No, I, I think the phone is a very important piece of safety for people showing up at the police department, thinking that it's staff twenty-four hours a day in the lobby. It's not. Officers are on duty, but they're not there. So having an outside door unlocked where they could come in, use the phone, get, get ahold of dispatch. And I think that's an important safety piece for citizens.
Just Chief, having been in the building now for a couple of weeks or whatever, any, any problems you're noticing? I'm sure you, and Matt would have talked about it, but any, any issues with the building not operating properly or anything like that? Or does everything seem to be working as it's supposed to?
It's, it's, everything's pretty good. It's well-designed and functions very well. The, you know, there's a few minor things. Our air conditioning isn't working, but it turned out it was a switch that was broken. So they've bypassed it and they're going to get apart minor keying issues. Other than that, everything's fine.
Good.
And that's where we have the, you know, things that we've come across. We do have plenty of money left in the budget to address that. And that's why I think it'd be best to get recommendations on those items through committees and go through the standard process because there's no, there isn't a sense of urgency that there was before. So there's no reason to make quick decisions on that. So we can get quotes from multiple vendors. We don't have to go through the, if we go through the contract right now, we would have to pay the prevailing wages and things like that. That's through the contract. That usually costs more than if we went out and received quotes.
Sure, agreed.
That's, that's all I ask.
Okay, next item, discuss update on Dublin Park project.
Okay, so things are moving along. Badger Land mobilized this week. As you, if you've been by there, you can, you can see that the structure has been taken down and it's in the process of being put up. The footings have been dug. We did a little discovery on the gazebo and found that the news is good. The foundation seems to be secure underneath there. It seems to be properly done. So we are in receipt and in, and receiving bids for that project. We're going to talk about it at committee this week and then come back to the board with our recommendation.
Did I miss anything, Sean?
Next item of business is discussing considering, a number of school districts request to provide crossing guards for summer school. We talked about this last week and the direction was for me to go, oh, Jared's here again, sorry. To pool the, our current candidate, or our current crossing guards and see who is interested. And we actually had more than I thought that would be interested. More interested in the morning shift. But we have five current ones that would be interested in the early shift, two current ones interested in the, at the later shift. But through this process, I've, I've also gotten three new adult members contact me that would be interested and could do either one. I have also been contacted by some, most of them were fifteen, sixteen-year-old sophomore-age students. I think I've gotten three that are interested as well. With that all said, my recommend, my recommendation would be to put one at the lighted intersection to direct the kids across, I'm sorry, to direct the kids across B B, go up the hill and then they would cross at, they would cross highway and at the top of the hill. Have a guard at the top of the hill also. And then have a guard at Wheelbridge, Taylor and Main that again crosses either Wheelbridge or Taylor. And then they would come up to the top of the hill. So the main cross at, for N would be at the top of the hill. I would also recommend not using the students, just because I personally am not real comfortable with that age group stopping traffic on a Maine County highway.
Do we have, so we have two interested in the late shift?
Two plus the three adult, the three newer adults that I, so possibility five.
Five. Do we have any interest from the school?
So we have the contract directly, the village? Yep.
I did have, I did have one or two staff, however, they, like one I know was going to be teaching at Glacial Drummond, so that really wouldn't work as far as timing. So if we had the three, the three spots, can't remember off the top of my, so it'd be estimate of a thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars for the entire four-week time.
To cover both morning and late morning?
For three, the three spots.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So there's a motion and a second on the table to approve three crossing guards at three locations for the early and the late shift of summer school. Any more discussion, questions?
One, one question. Is there, because I don't know, and I apologize for the question. Is there an extra fee for the students to attend to summer school?
There are for some of the classes.
There's some of the classes, but they're very minimal. For example, most of the classes will run the five-dollar mark.
Okay.
And by state law, we only can charge for certain types of material because the district utilizes, utilizes that towards its membership counts.
Okay.
Will we need to do a budget amendment or can we take it out of some other, other thing?
Do it from reserves?
It will depend. That's all in the general fund. Depend on, we can get, you know, what other areas are possibly running under that we could maybe steal a money from. If it's all within the general fund, we, in the past, have not done a budget, budget amendment, only if it crosses funds. That's of course a decision that you guys can change if you'd like, but that's how we've done it in the past.
So, we would potentially just be over budget for crossing guards?
In that line item.
On that line item, okay.
Does this give you any heartburn, Deb?
Uh, I don't know yet. We'll see when it comes.
More, more than hurt kids in the middle of the meeting.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, we have motion and a second on the table. All those in favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you very much. Definitely appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared.
Next item is new business. Discuss and consider approval of an application for a block party for Mark Reinhardt at 302 Fox Circle Cottage Grove.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
This all gets reviewed through the police department, the block party thing?
Have you seen them yet? I know the fire department has, uh, reviewed them.
Checked off on the farm.
It's been sent, it's been sent over, so.
It was reviewed, yes.
Okay.
So, motion and second to approve an application for block party for Mark Reinhardt. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Discussed. Item B, discuss and consider approval of an application for a block party for Casey Brewing at 302 Melissa Lane.
Motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? There's been a motion and a second to approve the application for a block party for Casey Brewing at 302 Melissa Lane. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item C, discuss and consider direction to staff regarding a ground lease buyout offer from SBA Communications Corporation.
Let me give you a little bit of background on this and really what we're, this is on the agenda this evening, general information with the idea that if you have any additional questions, we'll get you the additional information. Matt sent out a copy of the mobile service facility agreement that we currently have. This involves a cell tower that was put up where Reservoir One was, on top of the hill by the, by Fireman's Park. And that all, those changes in terms of removing the reservoir came about, they originated out of a two thousand and three MSA engineering report on our public needs assessment for the water supply, and then that was updated in two thousand and thirteen. And essentially, all of the recommendations within the two thousand and thirteen said to take down the water tower, which was eventually done. And as, right around that same time, we were contacted by STC. They were interested in putting up a cell tower, and then they, they had originally talked about doing it on progress drive, but then they decided to try to partner with the village and put it up on the site of Reservoir One. And so, the tower went up and, the cell tower went up and the reservoir came down. And then, there was a lease negotiated between the entities, between the village and STC, and the current lease is for ten thousand dollars per year for forty years, three percent increase per year. The village has also provided free space on the tower, and I believe that US Cell also has an antenna on, on the tower. And they also carry insurance. And so, out of the blue, we have gotten a proposal from them where-
Well, actually, first, they, they sold, STC Towers sold to SBA Communications, and there's some, there's some other, through, through that transaction, somehow STC Towers merged and created a new LLC entity where they're the tenant, but SBA is the owner of the facility. And, but the, the actual company that owns it has made us an offer to, to purch, to buy out the lease in a lump sum arrangement.
Now, as, from a staff point of view, we really haven't had a chance to go through this in any detail. We, there are, there are several issues that kinda jump out at, at me, because they were talking about creating something called perpetual communications easement. I have no idea what that is, what that would involve, and who would have responsibilities. But we received the request or the proposal, and we wanted you to have it, and you also now have the mobile service facility agreement, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that I, that I can. Mike is also here. And otherwise, we would, we would proceed with trying to find some additional background and then come back with a more full report at, at a meeting in June.
Do you speak to the severance of the, is there a notice that they would have to provide if they wanted to, if, if we didn't do this and they wanted to just get out of the lease?
There's default language in the agreement, but there's no, I couldn't find a get out, get out clause.
Yeah.
That's why I was curious, cause-
There's no village get out clause that I saw, and there is, on the other side, there's no tenant get out clause either. There's default.
How many years into this are we? One, one or two? Year and a half.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight plus years remaining.
Yeah, I don't see those trading at ten-dollar mark.
Yeah, I mean, what, if I did the math right, the value of that contract is six hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Right, and then, did you figure in the three percent increase?
Yeah, that's with the three percent increase. So, you, you take ten grand, multiply three, and then just keep doing that. I did it for like thirty-eight years, so it's not even, I guess, the full license, probably even more than that.
And the biggest issue is simply, you don't know where mobile faci, mobile, mobile service facilities will be in forty years. And, you know, you've, we've seen such a change in the course of time that I represent municipalities, first thing was putting antennas on top of water towers. And then suddenly, you looked around the Wisconsin countryside and they were everywhere. And then, in nineteen, just recently, the last two, two years or so, there was a law passed, which was part of the budget amendment, and it was pushed through by the cell companies. And it essentially took away all of the municipality's power to regulate these sites, except if you have, except that they're gonna build on a site that you own. But that also played a factor in our, our looking at this. So, again, this is here for your consideration, and we'll try to find out some additional information, but this is the basic background.
I think what we, what we have to figure out is, if they can get out of the agreement in five years, or whenever, without much penalty, then, you know, maybe we look into this a little bit more and counter-
They can do that anyway. I mean, they, there's no end date on what they gave us. They wanna buy it out and be there forever. As, as Lee described, there's no limit then, they have an easement, they can put whatever they want.
Right, but I'm saying-
You can end up with a bunch of dishes there, and that's not stuff that we, I guess there has to be a plan for them.
I'm saying if they can get out of the agreement tomorrow and-
Go somewhere else, then that's-
And we don't get-
They could do that anyway.
You know, it doesn't matter if the agreement's worth six hundred thousand, it's not really worth that then, you know, if they can back out. So, I think that's what we need to figure out.
One of the things too that we wanna find out is, because we had, I don't think this was the same person that contacted us.
No.
But at one point, we were contacted and they said, well, we wanna make you this offer, and in fact, we just closed with the city of Middleton on, on offer like that. And that was interesting, because I have contacts with Middleton, Matt has contacts with Middleton, so we called over there and said, say, by the way, have you done that? And they said, well, no, the woman's on her way over apparently from meeting with you to make a proposal to us. I said, oh, well, okay, apparently, the story's got a little change there. So, we'd also like to find out if there are other municipalities that they have contacted, because SBA is a much bigger corporation than STC was.
Bottom line is, we need to table and direct staff to give, get more information for us.
Second.
I guess-
Well, you wouldn't table it, because the motion or the item is, just give us directions, so give direction.
Okay.
So, the motion would just be to give direction, staff, direction to spend, to research for-
To, to their defense, I did put in an email that they may table if they want to too, but-
What happens when you have a parlor material playing at his?
My guess is that within a very short period of time, they're gonna have more power to do what they want than they do right now. That's my guess.
The other thing to consider is, how much is this looked into in a sense of legal time and things like that?
At this point, we'd like to limit that.
How much interest, how much interest is there in, in this, to the extent that there could be some legal costs?
And that would be part of what we would wanna recover from them as part of the deal we think.
Can we just direct them to come in and do a presentation with more information as to what they wanna do? I mean, how much effort do we really need to spend when they're coming to us?
Right.
We don't, we have a contract, I don't, bad word, but I don't really care, right?
They'll come in.
So, we have a contract, so we say, hey, you guys, if you guys want this, you need to do a little more work.
And define perpetual easement too.
Right.
Perpetual easement, a term limit, you know.
Communications easement, what exactly are you talking about here?
My concern would be is how much could we trust what they're gonna say?
Right.
I, I trust, I trust staff, I'm not sure I trust somebody who's coming in like that to do a presentation.
Well, right, but still, it's on them to present. We have a contract right now with them, so.
Well, any deals that they may have with other municipalities, we could find that out and then do open records requests.
Well, it's a bad idea then, maybe to ask them to come in and, and make a presentation and become prepared with-
They should provide references, people we can call. I mean, it's, again, it's on them.
Good idea.
It's not on-
Well, then, I guess the motion has to be revised to ask SBA to come in and also direct staff to do some limited research on other, what other municipalities have done.
Second.
Did you hear back from Middleton?
Well, they're not gonna, so, I, I asked this, when this person came in to discuss this, they were telling Erin and I that the one in Middleton, the one in Middleton is worth a little bit more than, you know, for one reason or another, worth a little bit more. So, we put in such and such amount, and I asked them, well, how much? Said, well, I can't disclose it. I'm like, well, it's public record. And that's when I kinda figured, maybe she hasn't really, maybe she's just lying. And so, we just let her on her way, and I called Mike Davis, the administrator there, and he, the only reason why he knew of this person was because I, she was coming to meet with them, and I said, well, you have about twenty minutes, she's just got on the bell line, so. I don't, last time I talked to them, they, after they heard that story, they weren't gonna trust her, and she's emailed Erin and I back, but we have left her, left her be.
I think ultimately, Alex, at the end of the day, what's gonna happen, regardless of whether SBA comes in with a presentation or not, is we're still gonna have to do our old legal research on it, and we're gonna have to have as much time put into it as, you know, as we will at any point, so.
Let's let them start the ball rolling first. And just some references, because that, you know, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. I mean, call these places and say, well, did you consider them? Have you proved it? What went into that? So, we can get you that information. Good idea.
Would we seek additional information also? I mean, the references that they give us, I mean, are we gonna be able to rely on those as reliable deals? I mean, you know.
As you, as you hope you can, so.
So, okay.
Are we thinking that the transfer from STC to SBA is what brought this on?
No.
No?
That was, I think, STC is a, was a real small, was a one-person company, and they're out of Indiana, and they were just bought out by this bigger company, and I think that this, I mean, I, I just wanna know why a company would wanna start buying out leases early, and there's gotta be a reason for it, and-
Well, I'm thinking part of their purchase of that company, that's something they would look into in depth and deal at that time, you know?
I, we had, it could very well have been their long-term strategy, I don't know. There was no indication of that. I will say this, that they've been really good to work with. I mean, far more responsive than the first, the first guy that we were dealing with.
Quick piece of the puzzle here too, is the agreement was started with STC, but SBA bought them mid-agreement and then finished the agreement.
No, the, the agreement was done with STC.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
I, I thought SBA purchased it during that and then okayed that final agreement.
No, we got the agreement, the agreement was finalized, and then STC, there, there was provision in there that they could, could make an assignment under certain circumstances, and they made the assignment, I don't know, a couple months later.
Okay, that's, thanks.
So, there's a motion on the table to request SBA to present more information to the board and have staff research other municipalities. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Next item is discuss and consider direction to staff regarding software to facilitate paperless packets. As the memo in, in the packet, this came up because we, we've purchased the tablets for the board members and planning commission members in an effort to be, to go towards being paperless, and it's much more efficient, it's much more cost-effective for the village, it saves on paper, and it saves on time for us. So, then the next step was trying to get it more seamless out to the public, and an easier way for the board members to view the packet on their tablet while at, at a meeting. So, we've been using a software, free software packet called Calamio that actually Parks and Rec uses, they, they're, Reese is the one that discovered it, cause they use, that's how they upload their recreation guide. But we've gotten feedback that because with the, it's free, the free version that we have, you can't download and you can't print. You can do that, however, if you start paying a minimal monthly fee. And I'm sure there's other soft, this particular software package is from France, and you pay in euros, which is fine, but I'm sure there's others out there. So, the direction, I guess, I'm looking for is, is that the direction that the board would like to go, and if so, do I have the authority to go research more software publishing type companies for future use?
Motion to direct staff to research wireless, wireless, paperless options, software options. Does that work for you?
Deb, how much would it cost to get the ability to print?
For Calamio, it's eleven euros a month.
Which means-
Which, if the exchange rate-
Seventeen dollars a month, twenty bucks a month?
Depending on what's flavor of the month.
How much, is it real difficult converting these to PDFs and sending them out in email to, to board members?
It's not, the, the, it's not, and we can continue doing that, but we can't get it onto the website with just a PDF. It's too large.
This is more of the access of all public to view it, and, and with wireless, here, they can come with a device and be able to sort of go through the packet.
And also with PDF, we run into a lot of issues, because like this week's packet, it's too big, we have to cut it down, and then some of your guys' email, depending on how you get it at home, depending on where your firewalls are set and the sizes that you can receive, it won't go through.
So, it's a pain when they're split. They gotta hop back and forth, I know.
When, you, I guess we're at the discussion part.
Seventeen bucks a month, you said?
That's for the French word.
Yeah.
Yep.
But, when you look at some of the other site, like Stone, I know, they, they post all our committee packets online, committee agendas, minutes go up very quickly, and it's embedded in the website. We should be able to use an FTP server, just upload it up there. Is this some- Is this something, you're super busy, is this something that we would want public relations to look up, look at as, as a whole? Not just for the village information, but for Parks and Rec information, and the flyers that go out and requests for crossing guards and other stuff? Rather than just, this is one solution for the board, it helps us, we have all the committees with a lot of information, that'd be great to get out to the public, and a lot of other communities do that, and they're successful at it, right in their, in the root of their home website. Is this something public relations would be better to have?
We've already kind of looked into that, and, and the elephant in the room is the website. The website that we use is a municipal blanket, generic website, and it's very limited, so.
Then how's, like, Stone?
Because they have, they have a website, a company, website company, ours is to the state, and honestly, we don't pay anything for it.
Oh, so it's a free, it's another free word?
It's very limited.
And we looked into that, too, and it's about ten grand to build a website, so we, we've done all of that because of similar requests in the past about upgrading the website, and we pooh-poohed it because of the price, so.
We did talk to the auditors, we can amend the cable franchise fee resolution to, to put specifically public relations, marketing, those types of costs in there, which would then allow public relations committee to make a recommendation regarding the website, and we can pay for it through those franchise fee funds.
I think I'd like to talk with the school district, because their, their board packets, very easy to navigate.
Do you know what they use? Port docs, I'm sorry, port docs. Okay. It's very user-friendly.
Sure.
We've had them come in, it was a little brace, we, we've had them come in before.
The school district isn't afraid to spend some money.
I mean, even if it costs ten grand, it's worth it to get information out to our villagers, and really to commercial entities that wanna come here.
Right.
And then, they can't get information in a proper manner, yes, they can come and they can call, but that's not how businesses run these days. It's, it's like, I'm gonna spend ten minutes on this internet project, and if I can't find the information, I'm gonna go to the next, the next community, and so.
Port docs would be a separate cost above and beyond the website, that's a, that's a separate service.
It's agenda management software package, too, that works with your website, the, there's port docs.
Do you have an idea of the cost, Jer?
So, one-time cost of ten grand, or?
To build the site, yeah, and then there's, you know.
But then there's maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah.
And depending on.
Yeah, approximately, I mean, six to ten, depending on what you want. If you, if you want a nice website, go look at Middleton's, very nice website.
Or Wanakee, Wanakee's got a board.
Yep, Wanakee, really, really nice.
Did you get projections on the maintenance, how much it would cost?
Um, we didn't, because once we brought the six grand back, it was, six to ten, it was kinda the end of it, but, but yeah, I mean, it'd be awesome, but we're not, we're not there. Now, at the same time, I don't know that somebody looking to invest here is necessarily just gonna go to the village website, they're gonna contact Ruda Bush or whatever, but, you know, if the information's on the village website, contact Ruda Bush, then, then it's fine, but I understand your point, but, you know, and then the question, too, is if, if, I mean, these packets are always available, they've always been available, anybody can simply call up and get a copy of any of the packets, and is, is it mandatory that we?
She has troubles emailing, though, that's the biggest issue, the copying fee and then emailing, so she can direct into a web link, that's certainly an advantage.
But I mean, you know, I mean, the, and I understand, I understand the idea is to get it on the website, I just, I don't know that it's that imperative. Is there a lot of call for people demanding information in packets?
We don't get a lot of calls, no, but I think, you know, somebody who might want the information, might want it, but not take the effort to call.
The other nice thing that you could do is through some, some websites, the, the one that Middleton uses, there's a way to, for a resident to choose a couple key words that they're interested in, and anytime those words show up on an agenda or in a packet, they get, they get sent that information, so, I think.
Oh, like SharePoint and any of that.
Hey, Matt, who's working on the amendment to the clause, is it you or public relations, or?
I can, I can do it, I, I haven't seen the resolution myself, but we can, I'm sure we can find it. Yeah.
So, what exactly should my, what should my, my direction be?
Because what I, what I, I made a motion.
To research.
To direct staff to research paperless option, paperless software option.
I'm gonna add second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? Okay, next is reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, community development authority.
Okay, earlier this evening, or beginning of the meeting, I passed out another version of what you received in your packet, and the community development authority met on May eleventh, and we discussed the question of whether to adopt bylaws, and almost all of the community development authority ordinances that I reviewed said that they would have, they were to have bylaws. And so, I called some of my friends to find out if they had adopted bylaws, and if so, could I get a copy? And it turns out that most of them, in fact, none of them had actually adopted bylaws. They said, yeah, we should look at that. So, I thought that the easiest way to deal with this and talked it over with the members of the CDA, and what we came up with was to amend the current ordinance. If you look at pages three and four of the amendment that I passed out this evening, what we are proposing is that there'd be a new section added that deals with various administrative matters, like an annual meeting, agendas, meeting protocol, and then also, there is an amendment I on page five that just clarifies that the community development authority does have the power to draft and forward amendments to the village board for approval. So, that is what you received in your packet, and this is just simply a different version of that, because this is what, once an amendment is approved by the village board, then this is what goes to the village clerk and to the village president to sign, so, that's what the first item is about.
This was recommended unanimously for approval by the CDA.
Second.
So, there's been a motion and a second on the floor to approve ordinance zero-two dash twenty fifteen and ordinance amendment section twelve dash nineteen, community development authority for the village of Cottage Grove Municipal Code.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions?
Next item is discuss potential joint meetings between village board, plan commission, CDA, and other entities as needed to discuss proposed development strategies, goals, and objectives.
This, there was quite a bit of discussion about this, and it was pretty much consensus of, of the authority committee to, that it would be a, a good idea for, for the, the authority to have an idea of what the vision and the desires of the plan commission and the village board are, so that they know where, where they have authority to proceed and what is expected of them. So, that was the purpose of, of having, suggesting a joint meeting of the three entities.
Don't we usually meet with plan in June? We have a joint.
There's a joint.
Yeah, there's a, there's an annual conflict amendment process, we kinda held that off due to the elections, because we're gonna have new, now we have the new members in both the plan commission and here in the board. I think you're right, it wouldn't make sense to use that as a framework for these discussions. You can reexamine some of these goals and visions that maybe we haven't looked at.
Aaron's working on some different examples of mission, mission statements and visions that CDA can consider, and ultimately, the board maybe have one of these joint meetings to do that as a group, but just to get discussion going, we'll have a few examples.
We also have two members of the CDA here this evening.
Three.
Three. Three. Uh, patiently watching our agenda, and I don't know if they, if they'd like to come up and maybe say something as well.
Well, come on, say anything, but I'm happy to stand here and say the words. So, I'm John Hogan, again, thank you to the board and Diane for appointing me, honored to be here. So, again, we, we've met a couple times, and I'd like to kinda kudos to what Harvey said, too, 'cause our discussion really revolved around this idea that, you know, we were given a couple tactics to get, but we questioned what's the mission, vision, and strategy. I mean, we're happy to, you know, stick our necks out, do stuff for the village, but, you know, kinda what, what is out there? I mean, what, what's this tip, you know, what's this tip gonna look like? I mean, we're happy to improve some trees, but tell me what the forest is gonna look like? You know, so, I mean, it's, it's really quite simply that, so, I mean, if you guys are right on track, we can just get together and find out kinda what, what the vision is, and we're happy to move forward.
I would just add to that, Jamaica, thanks again for appointing me to the authority, but I'd also add to that, elders, we'd like to have a better understanding of the tools at our disposal and the authority that the CDA has in order to put forward recommendations to the board, and so, we can understand this whole process.
Just a piece of that, the elders coming tonight, and to a lot of our meetings, they, they don't directly charge us for, for those, and, but it's something above and beyond, if they come to, like, CDA, there, there's probably a cost to that, so, I'll, I'll have a, more of a discussion with them, there really aren't, outside of the tax increment, financing incentives, and creating a revolving loan fund, and then some programs that Aaron can discuss with the CDA, that the state offers, we are rather limited for incentives, but I can, oh, next time I talk with Greg, I'll run that by him, see if he has any other ideas. But we'll try to plan things, like, like tonight, it was great that you guys could come, you could see, see his presentation, and we'll get copies of that presentation, I'll email to the CDA.
Motion to direct staff to arrange a meeting between the village board, the planning commission, and the CDA.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the table to direct staff to arrange a meeting between the village board, plan commission, and CDA in the near future.
Yeah, well, we're supposed to be meeting with planning anyways, maybe we can just do, do that all together, as soon as possible.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Emergency government committee.
Uh, we met on Wednesday, uh, Wednesday, May sixth, our next meeting is on Wednesday, June third. I was elected secretary and Mike was elected chair, we just flip-flopped because we're the only two village and town people on it, the other people are citizen employees. And our next meeting's gonna be at Paul Davis Restoration, so they're gonna give us their presentation about what they offer and that kinda stuff, and so, it's gonna be down at Paul Davis, if anyone wants to come, you're more than welcome. They invited everybody to attend, just to see what their facility offers and what their services are for emergency needs, should they arise. And that's it.
Great.
Yeah, I, I'd like to go back to, to the CDA for just a moment, if I may.
Sure.
Just to put a, put a couple more details from the, from the committee meeting that we had.
Oh, I'm sorry.
President McAfee was elected chair of the CDA, I'm secretary. The two citizen members that were here kind of addressed the other issues that we talked about, and, you know, that, those were, that was kind of all I wanted to address, thank you.
Nine C, plan commission, somebody want to report on the commission first, or?
We met last Wednesday, and the three items that are on the agenda tonight were brought before the plan commission. I think at this point, I would turn it over to Aaron to summarize.
Sure.
Go straight to the first item here, nine C one, this is a, discussing, consider request from Geraldine Schwinn, who's been reading very patiently here in the front row, representing the Duscheck Revocable Trust, just looking for approval to create a two-acre lot around an existing house on a parcel, this would be the northeast corner of TTNM. It's designated as planned business on our future land use map. Many of these ETJ CSMs we look at are in parcels that are designated for aid preservation, and there we have some limits on the number of splits we can create, because this is a planned business site, that doesn't really apply. The only concern we might have is would this potentially hinder development in the future? I don't think that's the case, if anything, splitting the house from the surrounding land might actually make selling the surrounding land easier if the time came, so we're recommending approval, with one condition, there's a few formatting items on the map itself, we'll ask the surveyor to clean up, but the plan commission did recommend approval of this unanimously.
Motion to approve the recommendation from planning with the conditions stipulated by planning?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the table to approve a request from Geraldine Schwinn, representing the Duscheck.
Revocable.
Yeah. Eleanor G., for approval of ETJ CSM creating a two-point-zero-five acre lot around an existing house located at forty-eight, forty-six county highway, and any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? Item two, discussing, consider request from Shady Grove LLC for approval of ordinance zero-one dash twenty fifteen to annex thirty-eight point three-eight-seven acres located at twenty-eight sixty-three county highway BB from the town of Cottage Grove to the village of Cottage Grove.
Uh, this item was recommended for approval by the plan commission, a five-to-one vote, with the condition that the applicant provide us with a signed copy of a pre-annexation agreement that we had provided with them. We heard from their attorney today, and they're still looking over that, they haven't signed it yet. With that in mind, we'd recommend tabling it until we get that signed document, and then we can come back here with all the information.
Before we, before we table it, mind if I just give you a little bit of background as to why this is such an issue? This particular annexation had, first, an annexation goes to Department of Administration, and the Department of Administration says, is it in the public interest or is it not in the public interest? And they, DOA has said that they didn't feel that this was in the public interest. This would be the second one that, that the village has considered over time, the first was in the Houston Beacon annexation, and both of the annexations involve something called a balloon on a string, and it just means that, that a small piece of land connects the larger piece of land that you're talking about annexing.
I can just jump in, the concept of public interest is defined very specifically by the statutes. It sounds like it would mean, is this a good idea or not, and that's not really what it means. It means, one, who can provide services more easily, the village or the town, the DOA didn't have a problem with that aspect. The services that are required are more easily provided by the village. The second criteria is basically a two-dimensional geometric problem, how, how do the pieces fit together? And that's the aspect of this, where the DOA took a little bit of an issue.
That's a, that's a great point, and as part of that, there was a change in statutes, I believe, like, two or three years ago, where now, and, and in, in between when the Houston Beacon parcel was approved, and now the town has the ability to fight the annexation. And so, the question is whether you're inviting lawsuit or not, and if you do invite the lawsuit and the town wins, then the village ends up paying their legal fees, and there is, and litigation is always, to me, it. and there is, um, and litigation is always, to me at least, the last resort because, um, the question is how much, uh, my father used to say, how many men do you want to die? He would take this hill. And, you know, uh, in this situation, um, this, it's likely that there could be litigation. And so, in the pre-annexation agreement, we tried to address that, and this is, and I must admit, this is a first, that is to essentially say, we were told by the developer that the owners of this property were willing to reimburse us for all of our costs, plus theirs to defend, to defend against this lawsuit. And I need to be convinced of that. I, I, I think that, um, are they really, do they really understand that? And are they prepared to have, to give us essentially an open checkbook? But more importantly, the question is, do they have the financial resources to back it up? And, and the direction from the plan commission was that the pre-annexation agreement be revised to make sure that they would have to put up a surety of some kind. We'd still have to find out what amount we're talking about so that the village would know that they are going to get their fees reimbursed because to simply sign the pre-annexation agreement with no kind of guarantee would be relatively worthless. So, um, we made clear to the person that was here that, um, Mr.
Sands.
Sands is-
Engineer.
Uh, the engineer who's, uh, representing the developer that, um, because he said that it was being reviewed by an attorney. And I said, well, then I need to hear from that person because I want to make sure that they understand and they also understand that there's gonna be further drafting and they're gonna be responsible for all of our fees, including all the time that's been put in up to this point. And I have not heard anything, apparently someone called Devin, Aaron today, but that person hasn't contacted me. So, that's some of the basic background that goes into the request to, to table.
What, uh, why does the town have the right to sue if the property owner wants to do this?
Because, um, the legislature changed the law.
With the noting, if the town challenges and the annexation is not overturned, the town would be responsible for all of our costs.
Do we have reason to believe that that would happen? I'm sorry, I'm tossing the ball way out.
Reason to believe what would happen?
That, that the town would win.
You know, if I could guarantee-
Well, I know, but what are the, what are the, what are the burdens that they would have to-
Well-
Is there any precedent in all this?
We're hanging on a driveway, that's what we're, we're hanging on a driveway, which I think is very weak. I think Jennifer, the, the, the biggest issue that would come up is the, the DOA recommendation, which is not binding, but it's the question of how does a court look at that? And will they say, um, well, this, this doesn't violate something called the rule of reason? And, you know, I'm getting into this deeper than we need to at this point. But the idea is that, um, you know, litigation is time-consuming and it costs money. And as you know, in the past, when, when I've talked to the village board about becoming involved in litigation, I've always counseled against, uh, or making sure that it's not something that's irrational. Because the town, for the price of, uh, uh, of, of making a filing can, can start to challenge and then there has to be a defense and that takes time from staff and that takes legal time, um, and resources.
I, I'd like to make two comments on this and that. One is that, uh, the DOA talked about the balloon on a string. This balloon on a string is maybe a few hundred feet, whereas the other balloon on a string was quarter mile or longer.
Okay.
Um, the, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, is that this annexation was essentially postponed from, uh, an April meeting to give the new board, um, the chance to discuss it rather than, rather than acting on it back in April.
And there was, uh, the DOA letter, Aaron, you might be able to flush this off for me, but there, there was a suggestion made that an adjoining property owner could join in.
Yes.
Um, and that would, that would rectify the situation. And apparently, that hasn't really been pursued. I mean, they don't have to, but it was just something that, that we asked at the night of the, um, plan commission. So, this is one of those situations where I want to make sure that everybody understands the issues that are involved. This is not just a regular annexation, um, this has got one, this has got some potential for litigation.
Can I ask a process question? I think the motion was to table, was that correct?
Yes.
Would, would, would it also, as a process question, um, could we put it back to the committee to have it reviewed, to get the ducks in a row, so to speak, as, as a, as a potential motion? Or is it proper to table it and then have it brought back to the board?
I, I think it's, it's, uh, probably most, um, appropriate to be tabled and then brought back to the board because they've made a recommendation to us.
Yeah.
And so now, now the question is, do the property owners follow through?
Yeah, the recommendation was based on them signing the pre-annexation agreement.
Could we go back and say, hey, committee, you should get this potential litigation thing figured out?
That's what the, the-
I think they're giving us that, that responsibility.
Yeah, okay, okay.
You know, that, and, and you know, Alex, the thing was that the, the presenter made it sound like it was, oh, it'll be done tomorrow. Well, it, it isn't. So, I don't, I don't know what the, what the status of it is, but if they're still reviewing it, then they may have some questions.
Okay.
Do we have another one?
What, what, what are you guessing?
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking a big dollar amount of, you know, I think you're looking at a hundred or $200,000.
Right.
And the reason I'm saying that is because like when Mike does a, uh, a letter of credit, it's not just for the amount of improvements, it's what is it, like one and a half times or?
Twenty-five.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, it's more than what you think it's going to be. And, I mean, I would want a dollar figure that's high enough that, um, uh, that we know that we're not gonna incur any costs because I want everything reimbursed, not just legal costs.
Hold a question. There's a motion in the second on the, uh, to table this gen item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, table. Item number three, discussing, consider request to amend the village of Cottage Grove zoning ordinance to change indoor commercial entertainment from a conditional use to permitted by right in the planned office and planned business districts when such uses are not adjacent to a residentially zoned property and when such uses do not hold a liquor license.
Um, just to give a little bit of background on our zoning ordinance, the way it works, we have districts, which are things like planned business, planned office, um, various residential districts. Then we also have, um, a chapter of land uses. Certain land uses are allowed in certain districts, sometimes with certain restrictions based on the district they're in. Um, so indoor commercial entertainment includes things like restaurants, taverns, um, fitness centers, martial arts studios, anything like that. It's separated from other types of retail or other types of, um, professional services because they tend to have later hours. Um, right now, that land use is allowed in, um, planned office and neighborhood office, planned business and neighborhood office, neighborhood business. In all of those districts, currently, it's a conditional use. So, if a restaurant wants to move into any of those districts, um, they would have to come and get a conditional use permit. Um, or a fitness center or any of those types of businesses that fit in that category. The additional regulations under the land use basically dictate the relationship of those businesses to residential properties. In looking at ways to possibly streamline getting new businesses into the village in places like the Gidorzi Building or the strip mall by Piggly Wiggly, uh, we looked at, this is an option to remove a little bit of red tape. Those properties are not adjacent to residential properties. Um, businesses like this wouldn't really have a negative impact certainly on residents because they're not close enough and they wouldn't tend to on other businesses either. So, what we're proposing is that in the planned office and planned business districts on a property that's not adjacent to residential, so again, the Gidorzi Building, some of the properties on N in the Commerce Park, um, the strip mall by Piggly Wiggly, um, I think the only other one was the property next to CVS. Um, these uses would just be allowed by right. Um, unless it's a business that requires a liquor license, then they go through the conditional use pro- process as it's set up right now.
Motion to approve the zoning amendment recommendation from planning commission.
Second.
So, there was, uh, as it's a change in the zoning code, there was a public hearing at plan commission and, uh, there weren't any comments from the public. Does a conditional use permit, Aaron, need a class one or class two notice?
Class two and a public hearing.
So, two, two weeks in the paper, so that would be where, um, we could slow down a, a business where they have to, we have to advertise for two weeks. Depending on the timing of that and plan commission, they would either, either have to foot the bill for a special meeting or wait until the next plan commission and then board for approval. So, um, it, it just creates a little bit more flexibility.
Is there any way for a business to sneak in with a less than reputable, um, desire like burlesque or something by this, including this change?
There's a specific adult entertainment land use, that's a whole different category. And again, I think with the liquor license provision, we'll know when they come in for a liquor license, they would also have to go through this conditional use.
And it's referred to as adult entertainment.
Well, whatever, whatever, living in the, living in the 1850s, but-
Again, this is just for the planned office and planned business, neighborhood office, neighborhood business, which do tend to be tied in more with neighborhoods. These would remain a conditional use.
Right, but I'm saying, I mean, you know, the, is, are they restricted or something in that? I don't know that it's really a concern, but when I see indoor commercial entertainment, I think somebody going, hey, I can get a business in there that, you know, under that clause and I just want to make sure that that's not possible.
Aaron's all over it.
Yeah.
No liquor license, I like, okay.
So, there's a motion in the second on the floor to approve the request to amend the village of Cottage Grove zoning ordinance to change indoor commercial entertainment from a conditional use to permitted by right in the planned office and planned business districts when such uses are not adjacent to a residentially zoned property and which, when such uses do not hold a liquor license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? You understand? Okay. Uh, next item, police commission. Is there a committee with, or commission report first or jump right into the first item?
Well, I think the only person that was there is Chief.
Yes, the police commission met last week. Uh, my recommendation was to, uh, ask for two acting sergeant positions within the police department until permanent supervisory staff can be hired. They, uh, approved that recommendation and now has to go to the law enforcement committee, which meets next week. And this is something that would be within our budget. They would get, uh, nominal pay for these acting positions, stay on their same shifts, have the same duties, but they would have acting supervisory, uh, capacity during the time they are in those positions.
So, this is something that you'd have on the LEC agenda for next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, the 28th, I think it is.
Seven?
Seven.
So, tonight, we're not acting on this?
No. Okay.
So, real quick, Chief, it's within budget and then, um, um, uh, creating the supervisory role later, uh, that's adding staff, is that correct?
That's, that's the idea, yes. The lieutenant position would be additional staff and that's the recommended, the study recommended that position.
Okay.
And the criteria for hiring that.
Okay.
So, sergeant position would be temporary?
Temporary only with obviously the option, if you do create a sergeant position later on, that those people would be eligible to apply for that, obviously.
Well, the, the current direction is actually to fill the lieutenant position, um, through attrition. So, unless, unless direction changes, that, that's the plan. So, if someone, if an officer takes a, a new position, a, a new patrol officer will be hired, but a lieutenant would be hired in their place. The, um, report does call for a, a range of officers, that's a couple above what we have. So, um, you know, that could be addressed during budget time.
Okay, um, Public Works and Properties Committee? Public Works and Properties, we're meeting tomorrow, actually. So, no report yet.
Come on, Alex.
We have an agenda. Thanks, JJ, for working real hard, getting the agenda together, a lot of back and forth email, um, and that's it.
All right, Utility Commission?
Uh, I do have some notes from that. Um, this will be our last meeting, that was our last meeting held at the Bonnie Road facility. Really great, dynamic team, really focused on the fun things of sewer and water. Um, but a really good team, they're really focused on, on, on what's needed for Cottage Grove, so it was really good to, to meet everybody. Um, next meeting, we do expect to be in the new Public Works building. Um, no one from the public, uh, attended the meeting. We had an update from MSA on reservoir number two. It was basically the same presentation that we received here, uh, last, at the last meeting. Um, they reviewed the bid schedule and noted that the, the contracts were signed, uh, as directed from the last board meeting. Uh, they discussed the Gaston Road Water Main Transmission Line. This is part of the long-term strategic growth for Cottage Grove. Uh, Utility Commission approved, MSA completed the engineering for this project. Um, this is needed, as discussed earlier today, as part of, um, the Clean Water Act and be, we need to do the engineering so that we can apply for the loan for the Clean Water Act. The construction would be next year. MSA will be at a later meeting for the final presentation for board approval. So, that's coming. And, um, the Public Works Director is keeping an eye on changes to sewage use ordinances and that's driven by federal law updates and a CMOM program, which is Capacity Management, Operation and Maintenance, which has a bunch of DNR updates coming in 2016. And we also approved vouchers, that was on our agenda.
All right. Next section was reports from village officers. Kyle?
No report.
Jack?
No report tonight.
Alex, you have some items under your name?
Um, I attended the UW Clinic Groundbreaking, uh, Harvey was there, Diane was also there. I got a shovel. I took the shovel, it's, it's, I give it to Village Hall, it's not, and I don't consider this really a trophy, uh, more of an achievement, um, by a business here in Cottage Grove to, to invest in Cottage Grove and, and grow their facility. So, it's, it's really an achievement. I'm not sure what we do with it, it probably hangs around Village Hall until it goes to Public Works and we build something with it, I guess. I also attended the 2015 Local Government 101 Basics You Need to Know, presented by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. The budget portion was riveting, and I, I do say that a little sarcastically, but there was a lot of really good information and I think it's gonna help transition into this role. Um, and then just also on a personal note, I have a lot of, I have a bunch of travel coming up in the next two months. It's summer and there's a bunch of things going on. So, I'm gonna email that schedule to the team. Uh, I do expect to be at all the board meetings, there might be one I might miss depending on if we have it around that July 4th weekend, um, but I, I might need some, um, help just watching over some of the committees. I'm not sure how all that works, process stuff, but I'll send that schedule out and then to Devin and Matt and then, uh, figure coverage, I guess, as, as needed, so that the reports can be presented back to the board from the committees.
There's typically the primary that's involved.
Take the alternate, man, thanks. That's all I have.
Um, Ed?
Um, no report.
Jennifer?
Uh, just, uh, for your information, Dr. Paul Bros, the, uh, principal at the high school, was elected the High School Principal of the Year by the Wisconsin, help me out, Jared, Wisconsin School Administrators Association, so that was a great honor. I think that's it for now.
Harvey?
Nothing.
Pat?
Uh, got the rest of the committee, um, stuff here, for both trustees and citizens. Do you want me to, do you want to over here?
Yeah.
I have an I V. I have an IAV, so I'm glad, it's easy to download if you want to do that.
You guys have not seen this, have you?
Yeah. Edit for the brunch, because it won't do.
Matt, do you?
Sure.
Sorry. The only change is, take Jennifer off the peer steering though, have to redo that one.
Do you know who you're going to put on it?
I don't know.
Trustee, okay.
Guess who wants to see us here? I may do it myself, it's the way everyone wants.
I have a couple things to say, obviously. Considering this is a new board, this does not provide the trust that I thought we were all looking for, considering I just got this, and it's two weeks late already, I'm not pleased at all, you've taken my committees away, for the most part, and I didn't even know it was going to happen, because I was under the understanding that you were good, is what you told me the last time I talked to you. So, I'm, I'm not impressed. I'm going to make a motion to, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to ask each, each of these committees be approved individually.
I need to steal somebody, sorry.
These were approved last time, first three.
Art, ad hoc architectural review, was it, was it? It was just utility, Public Works and Emergency Government.
Those are three approved last meeting.
So, the first committee is ad hoc architectural review.
Jeff, can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Are we considering just the board appointments right now, or are we also considering the citizen appointments?
Board.
Okay.
It's, what's in yellow, which is bold?
Board is, the board is bold, board is bold, yellow's everybody.
The people are bold.
Yeah, people are bold and yellow would be the board.
Yeah, but it is, it is bold.
It's bold.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but this, I'm sorry, this vote is just for trustee, or are you lumping trustee and the citizens together? Just for trustee? So, the trustee for ad hoc architectural review, which is Pat McAfee, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. I didn't, who's second, Deb?
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Can you repeat the motion?
To approve Pat McAfee on ad hoc architectural review.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, or, yeah, abstained, so that one's approved. Parks Recreation and Forestry Committee, trustee member is Jennifer Pickle, motion for that.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's been a motion to second, sorry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Public Relations, trustee on Public Relations is Ed Lemay.
Motion approved.
Should you start with it?
That's not, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on just a sec, we didn't do the people on the last one.
No.
We're not.
No, we're not.
I'm asking the board members this time.
So, if it's through 16 that we don't have?
That's the question I asked, was whether, whether we were doing both, and right now we're just doing the board members.
Okay, so, the problem I have with that is that nobody seconded that motion yet.
I did.
So, Ed, seconded that motion?
For which one, Parks?
No, to, to, to vote that way.
We did, it wasn't a motion, it wasn't a motion, it was a request.
It was a request.
Oh, okay, sorry, I missed it.
So, I apologize, Public Relations, we didn't, we don't need to do, the next one is Law Enforcement, the two new members are Alex and Kyle.
Motion to remove Alex and replace myself.
Second.
There's a motion on the table to remove Alex and replace him with Jennifer Pickle. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those...
Well, just wait a second, wait a second. The appointments, if I'm not mistaken, are made by the Village President and is subject to board approval, and...
The board, right, the board doesn't get to...
Right. Pardon me?
Where does it get the pick?
Right.
So, I can just say no, motion to, motion to not approve?
Right, right. That's my, my recollection.
Yeah.
And the reason I know this is that in, in the past, this issue has come up.
I can withdraw my motion, or I can amend it.
Okay.
Motion to not approve?
Second.
Do we need to do a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, if you're debating, it's probably best to do a roll call.
Well, anybody can ask for a roll call.
Okay, there's a motion in the second to not approve the LEC appointment, will you recall vote? Kyle, Kyle Bloom?
I'm against that.
It's a negative, it's a weird motion, because it's a negative, this is actually one of the things they came up with in the municipal...
So, you're voting nay?
I, a vote to approve against what they're saying, because they're saying vote to not approve.
So, you're voting nay on this motion? You don't agree with it?
No, this is, this is, they mentioned that, I apologize, this was part of the, because it's fresh in my memory, motioning for a negative is, makes it hard to vote for, because...
What Kyle's saying is the appointments, as they're written down, he approves.
Correct.
But the motion on the table is to not approve, so he is not approving, so his vote is nay.
Not approving.
Therefore, his vote is nay.
Right, he's nay, okay, very good, thank you. Now, that makes sense.
Henrik?
I think I got a headache, but I'll, I'll go with Jennifer's motion.
Alex?
Nay.
Ed?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pat?
Nay.
So, so, motion passes four to three.
So, right now, you don't have people for the Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Committee?
Next committee is...
Plan?
Plan, and the two new are Pat and Kyle.
Motion approved.
Second.
I, I just have a question, and, and, and I'm assuming that just because, because this hadn't been approved at, prior to the Plan Commission meeting, that's why I was able to attend and be, okay.
Your, your term continued until the new people were put on.
Okay, I, okay.
Was there a second on that?
I did.
What's the motion?
To approve plan, as presented, for trustees.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have...
Motion approved, there are three Ms.
Second.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, next is...
Or feels?
Utility.
Utility's already been approved.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So, it's just, you're right.
Finance and Personnel.
Yep.
Motion to not approve.
Second.
We'll do that again.
I'm so surprised.
Okay, so, we'll do a roll call vote on this again, and again, it's a reverse, so, Kyle?
Nay. Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pat?
Nay.
So, again, that is four to three, so we need to come back with somebody else for that one. Public Works was already done, Board of Review, Jack and Kyle are the new ones.
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It always gets in there.
Opposed? Abstention? Joint Fire is Pat?
Motion approved.
One, you want to do a second, instead?
Second.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, abstentions?
Next one is ordinance with Village Board members.
Motion approved.
Okay, ordinance is Alex.
Ed motioned, I'll second.
Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? CDA is Pat and Harvey? No, just Pat, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Emergency Government's done, peer?
I'll go back to that one, yeah.
Nat Big Landfill, Alex and Kyle?
Motion to approve.
Wait a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Next is the Citizen Committee members.
Okay, so, right now, then, you have two committees that have, that not have their trustees approved, one is Law Enforcement, and one is Finance and Personnel.
Yes.
So, then, Pat will need to make a proposed appointment either tonight or next time.
Does he need one each, or two, or how many?
One each, well, no, two, I guess.
Okay.
Law Enforcement, two.
I guess so, well, yeah.
Is that coming later, or tonight then?
Later.
Is there a reason it's going to come later?
Because I feel like it.
So, do we want to take the citizens all as one, or do we need to do separate? Any requests?
I, I can do it all at once. Can we go back to aye? I wasn't real comfortable with that response, Pat, to be quite honest.
Sorry, I'm not going to do aye.
Well, that's fine, but I guess my question is, why were, why were the changes made?
It's, I just felt it was time for change.
Yeah, but you gave me one committee, and you gave a new, a new board member, five.
No, he didn't want two of them. It seemed to jump up to the Nat Big Landfill. We'll discuss it later, I'll, I'll talk to you later.
Well, I think it's, I think it's interest of the public, to be quite honest with you, so, I don't know that it's the correct time, or I don't want to violate any procedural things, but, I mean, Jennifer's been on both these committees for a long time, she's well versed, she's knowledgeable, she's outstanding candidate.
Actually, what we, it's not the right time, because, and this has been an underlying issue here, which is the, the whole question of reports from Village Officers, and we've tried to make clear that the only thing that's going to really happen unless it's actually listed, is something's non-substantive, and so, since this is substantive...
Okay.
I would say that we make it an agenda item for, for next time.
Okay.
And do it that way, that way, then it can be debated.
Okay. Can we make that...
So, what are we supposed to do about LEC next month, next week?
Right now, the, the members that are on LEC would continue, because their position has not been filled.
Just like, just like Captain with me with plan.
Okay.
Okay. So, we can get it on the agenda for next time?
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, with the citizen members, do we want to take those all on one?
Yeah, I'm motioning to do it all as one.
Second. If they're not here to defend themselves, maybe we'll put them on.
So, you're motioning to approve all the citizen appointees as one, and second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I'll let you take number three.
Yeah, I'll take number three. Something we and I am mad to talk about, my company's looking to, to build here, and just want to get out in the open that we are working on putting a plan to construct our processing and distribution center here. Well, Sally, is that kind of it?
That, and, and I will say that...
Anybody above board?
Yeah, this was also discussed with Pat's attorney, and it was at our kind of mutual suggestion that we put this on the board, so that there was, it was out in the open. We've also talked about the fact that Pat will need to recuse himself from any kind of involvement, and to make sure that there is, are no questions in the future, so, we just want to make sure that people understood that it had been discussed and will continue to be.
Yeah, and I did talk to Matt in there a year ago before it was on the board, so it was, it was a surprise.
Okay, Lee?
This is procedures for approval of closed session minutes, that's come up in the sense that there are a number of closed session minutes that need to be reviewed and approved. Robert's rules, I, I did check, it does allow for people who have not been on the board to make a motion to approve, otherwise, we're, you know, you're kind of stuck. But secondly, just so that people understand, there will be a time commitment in terms of going through the, the minutes, to make sure that anything that is, still needs to remain closed and confidential is reactivated. So, we just need some direction in terms of, do you want to, want us to start bringing clumps of these to the Village Board, to try to get them caught up, or you want to wait, or how do you want to handle it?
In the past, just to add, I'm sorry, the, the process has been, we haven't put them up for approval until every item on that particular meeting's closed session has been resolved and out in the open. So, given that there's a couple of issues that have been lingering for several years, there's a lot of closed session minutes out there that have not been released because of that fact. There's various ways to do that, some more time-consuming, some more confusing than others, so that, keep that in mind when you're thinking about...
So, who monitors all these minutes to make, to say when they're, that's your job? You're the minute police?
This sounds like a very inefficient use of staff time, to be honest with you. I say we just keep them closed until they're done and then release them, I mean, is there a problem with that?
Or do you have stuff that's ready to be released, but there's so much of it, you wanted to give it to us in dribbles and drabs?
Let's see, the best way to answer that is that there is, there would be a lot of closed session minutes to release, but there, as Deb is saying, most of them do have, and I mean, I haven't really looked at them in any detail, but most of them do have things that are, still remain closed, so you'll have to go through and reevaluate, thanks. Um, let's see, the best way to answer that is that there is, there would be a lot of closed session minutes to release, but there, as Deb is saying, most of them do have, and I mean, I haven't really looked at them in any detail, but most of them do have things that are, still remain closed, so you'll have to go through and react things. Natural.
Or skip that meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Or skip that.
So you'd have to approve them twice?
Yeah, that seems like a pretty inefficient.
Or three times, depending on the issues.
So, are we, you're just looking for procedure, I mean, I, I just say, keep them closed until everything out of this resolve and then release them.
Unless you wanted to put a timeline on it, after two years, you should let them out. So the effort to redact them.
There's, there's items, they're from four years ago, that's still not closed, so.
What if you want to? Yeah.
Wow. There's no statute on how long they can linger like that?
Nope.
No, but, I tell you what we can do is at least just look at them, and, um, and, and try to give you an idea of, of what we're talking about, I mean, are there's, are there some that we can release, I mean, we'll release them.
There's probably a handful, one's easier, two's easier.
Um, how many?
I don't know.
Two hundred and fifty?
Well.
No.
Well, I can tell you the one item started in two thousand twelve. So, there haven't been any approved since two thousand twelve, in the last three years, there's probably, maybe eight or ten that don't have that line, that topic in it.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Okay, fair enough. So you start with like the most recent, kind of word backwards, dude?
No, I start from the farthest away and work towards, but I can't, I mean, we're up to the point where.
And what's the issue to you?
Yeah.
Sure.
That item is still out there.
How many items are still out there, would you guess?
One, one main one, one big one.
There's one big one. The one that we're going to talk about next time.
Okay.
Fair enough. Moving on?
So what was the direction, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
To, okay, just leave it be for now?
Let it be for now, yeah, we'll meet the next meeting with, on the closed session.
Okay. Administrator May, easy.
No report.
Director of Planning and Development, Aaron Ruth. Next item is communications and miscellaneous business.
Easy for you.
Consider approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve, the actress was presented.
Uh, second for the village portion, eighty, eight hundred and forty, dollars and sixty-three cents.
So motion and a second on the table, is there any discussion?
There's some questions.
Sure.
Page three, under police department expenses, the K nine expenses. There was, um, accommodations for the car and the e-collar, so the accommodations for the car, would that be part of the capital for the vehicle, or is that?
No, both of those should actually be, they're charged to the right place, and, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but, um, so that's all to be paid for by the donations that have come in for the K nine program. Yes?
What is the expense?
I'm sorry.
There's no, there's no money in that expense account, yeah, that's why.
That's the, that's.
The, the description is a K nine accommodations for squad and the K nine handler e-collar?
Those are taken from the donations.
From the donations, okay, and the reason why there's no money in that account is because, well, a lot of that, we, we, there's not really a budget for that at all, depends on when donations come in, and the don, it's offset by the donations that are in the revenue section, so.
No, it was, they came in.
Just, that was the one that was replaced recently, is that right? Is that the total?
Right, he's now driving a Ford Explorer, which needs a different cage instead of a Crown Vic.
So everything's there.
You thought the dog thought it drive, just kidding. At some point, are we going to have to have budget considerations for the K nine unit?
No.
Supposedly not, because there's a hefty balance there, and, and the, I, I wasn't around, obviously, when the program was developed, but.
Right.
My assumption was that it was supposed to be cost neutral.
Right.
Yes.
Right, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, coming in, do you foresee that as a potential future budget need?
Way in the future, probably, could be, yeah.
Possibly, okay, thank you.
Eventually, a fund will be completed.
And just for, for your information, the end of March, the K nine donation fund had a balance of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, so it had more than enough to cover these expenses.
The only other question I had was on page four, that really helped me out with this one, um, was the emergency services building cap improvement, um, for that seven thousand dollars, it jumped out as a big thing, and she was able to give me the resolution where we were giving seven thousand last year, seven thousand this year, I think it was going to go to repair the driveway?
Yeah, there's a couple things they're going to do, there's, uh, light poles in the driveway, which is a real problem for snowplows, and there were, eventually, sometime in the future, going to put lights on the side of the building and get rid of the poles, so people can actually plow the whole parking lot, I don't know when that's going to happen, but that was one other thing.
Resurface.
Resurface, and resurface.
Pat, if you're going to be on the, uh, joint fire, uh, I'll give you one of the, the historical records, which is the, uh, there, there are some agreements, one in nineteen ninety-eight, one in nineteen ninety-nine, neither of which have been revised.
I think I've given those to all the new people, your, your kind of joint, your joint folder, they all have that.
Okay, these are the fire station, the infamous fire station agreements, and then it becomes the emergency services building agreement, and instead of attacking those, we kind of went with, uh, this agreement regarding the, uh, repair fund, everybody agreed to that, so, that was our way of, of addressing that.
I think it's, I think it's a really good idea, the town contributes, I think the same dollar amount we do, because they also signed it, the only caution, there's always something, there's a catch, in the agreement, it was described for the payment for this year and last year, the future payments, the referrals going to come from the joint fire department committee, and then we're going to have to budget for that next, for the next year, so, it may be seven, it may be five, it could be more.
Yeah.
So it's going to come from the joint fire department group, so it's, it's good to keep the building maintained, I just.
And, and because this was a, kind of a joint document, normally I don't put, uh, these, um, automatic renewals in, but on this one, it says, says that, uh, this can, this agreement will continue unless one of the parties prior to November thirtieth, uh, expressed their desire to terminate, so it'll just automatically renew, and you'll need the budget for the coming year.
No, I, when you refer a budget number, I guess, is that binding, or like, do we say, wow, twenty grand's a little much?
If it comes from the fire department committee to the board, it's a recommendation, right?
Okay.
And the board can, we just got to have a starting point.
Okay, thank you, that was really helpful, thank you so much.
Any other discussion?
I have one question, to kind of go back to our meeting last time, nothing on the budget necessarily, just the way that breaks down, is there a way that we can get just the, kind of the account numbers or account codes off of this that's distributed to the public? Because there's really no purpose for them to be on these, since that's done internally, because it gives a wrong impression, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
So last time we were discussing that we're approving the vouchers, we're not approving the account number that it's matching up with here, so, my proposal is to, or at least ask, is, can we remove that from here, because it has no purpose?
Show the invoices.
Remove just the account numbers.
Correct.
Right, basically, it, it, it would, it would glue everything back together, so, an example would be the, uh, Matt's, right, so that's split against multiple account codes, so it's eight dollars in multiple places, but really, there's one invoice from Matt, so sixteen bucks, or whatever it is, and so.
I, um, how about this, there's, there's a handful of, not a handful, several, um, canned accounts that come, or canned reports that come with our software program, um, I will have Cynthia run a sample of each, and you guys can choose, if you don't like any of them, or you want something different, it will come down to having one specially created, which will cost you quite a bit. But I can show you what we have available, and I guess can pick between my questions.
Well, it just looked like it was just a column, so I just was asking a question if there's a way to kind of have it on there, so.
I, I think the, the vast majority of the things you're seeing on here are in the correct account, there are items that are going to be moved later, but, but to say that, that, that none of them apply, I think is, if that's your impression that, that the accounts don't matter, I mean, is that what you're saying, is forget the accounts?
Well, that's kind of what our, from our discussion last time, was that the accounts isn't what we're kind of approving, we're approving the vouchers and the dollar amounts, and.
Right.
We're approving the invoices.
Yeah.
Right, so I just, you know, I just asked that, since that really this.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
We're not approving that account, so, what's the point of it being on the?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think part of the point is that, or, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the vast majority of these things are in the correct account, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb.
I'm not questioning that, I have, it's just.
You just don't think that the general public can understand that?
No, if, in the, if they go back and they don't read the minutes to say, hey, we're approving vouchers, and we're approving these dollar amounts, but we're not approving what accounts to go into, yes, I think it's confusing.
It looks like we're approving this document, which we're not technically, we're approving the invoices.
It looks like, as a board, we're approving this document the way it reads.
I think the only solution that we have is to let Deb generate those sample reports, and then decide which one is the best for our purposes.
Or, or, we simply change the language of the motion to approve the village portion, I mean, if we did that, would that, and then we would still list the, we would still list them, because I mean, I, I like to go through.
I'll call the question.
You know?
Okay, is there a motion in a second on the table, all those in favor, say aye? Can you repeat the motion, Deb, I'm sorry? The motion.
Motion approved of.
Motion to approve vouchers. Oh, I made a motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yeah, and then we can look at the different reports. Okay.
Next item is correspondence. And next item is future agenda items, I have two open house date for the municipal services building, and the two remaining committee trustee appointments, any others? Next time, Baker Tilly's coming.
Yeah, and along with that, too, Baker Tilly, there are auditors, there, there are also the utility, water utility rate consultants, so they, they monitor the utility rates, and at a future utility meeting, and, and then the board, um, she's told me, not, not due to any one project, but there hasn't been a full rate review since, I think, twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, um, and they need to do that, so, that would, uh, be coming later this summer, and the impact of that would be in twenty-sixteen, so.
Gosh, I thought we just did rates.
I feel like we did.
It seemed, it seemed like it was sooner than that.
It was twenty-eleven.
Sewer, which was just a, a maintenance thing, and there was also a smaller, uh, there's called a simplified rate case for water, which is just basically a cost of living adjustment, but a full rate study.
Okay.
Hasn't been done in at least four, about five plus years, so.
Okay, fair enough.
And then a, a reminder also, the, uh, department head panel on the twenty-eighth at five-thirty, a week from Thursday, so, first time doing that, so we'll see how it goes.
And that's being held here, right?
Yeah. Five-thirty.
And the committees and commissions all have a LEC report probably, then, I'm not sure, I mean, is that not what you need in here?
If you hold a meeting, I will put it under, do report it under the committee.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, Dublin Park, under Parks? Under Parks, you want to?
Well, I'm going to report on Parks, well, you've put it where it was, surprise.
When is the next board meeting, what's the date?
June first. June first.
June first. Do you just want to put in a thing about a potential forum at emergency government, if anybody else comes to the Paul Davis restoration?
We actually should have that language, um, if we don't, Deb, we should put it on every agenda, on the bottom of our agendas, mentions that there may be a forum from, from others.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
So we're covered. But I will make sure that.
I'll, I'll have to add that, the government, because, I don't think it's on there.
Can we have an update on the plan, CDA board joint meeting?
Here, when, when is the, I believe it's in the second meeting.
Typically, one of all, because we don't necessarily have to follow that schedule. There's things that we want to talk about for several meetings, I think.
Okay. Do, do, do the closed session begin?
Yeah.
I can't make a motion, so you can just leave it.
Yes, sir. The motion is moved to close session?
Um, the village, the village board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, per one, per G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, discuss various legal matters regarding potential enforcement of contractual matters with SDS architects, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to go into closed session, it'll be a roll call vote. Kyle Broom?
Nay.
You don't want to go in a closed session?
No.
Can you do that?
Yes, yes, I'll leave the room.
No, you don't.
No, no, you can, you can vote against the closed session, you can still attend a closed session.
Okay.
But you can't vote on a closed session?
No, you can't, there's no vote in a closed session. There's no vote in a closed session.
Well, I mean, sometimes there's votes.
You're, you're a member of the.
Not, normally, you're a member of the group, so you can vote against a closed session.
Okay.
Okay, Jack Henrik?
Aye.
Alex Justison?
Nay.
Ed Lemay?
Aye.
Jennifer Pickle?
Aye.
Harvey Potter?
Aye.
Pat Macacy?
Aye.
We are in closed session.